Oh, these are buildings for bay view nurseries.
Were they near for nurseries?
Okay.
And then this is all their planted area.
Okay, got it.
So they'll just be adding new property.
Woodview Nursery.
Yes. So can I have a motion to approve the A and R as submitted?
Sumoed.
Second.
Second by Frank. All in agreement?
Aye.
Motion passes. So all we have to do is sign the one mylar.
Next up is a special permit site plan modification for Woodlark Park condominiums. That's under number two of your binders. There's a short review of the project that gives a background that this and Woodlark Park representatives can start coming up to the podium. Property is located off Main Street on Woodlark Drive. It's a condominium. They're submitting as the condominium trust, looking to construct four parking spaces as shown on the plans. They came before us in April to discuss it with the board, and the board asked them to come back with a formal application or modification.
And this is a modification of a special permit granted some time ago. Special Permit 351A.
So basically, the purpose for these four parking spots is we have people currently parked where those spots are marked, but they're kind of in the middle of the road because it's not pushed back. And the problem with that is Woodlark Park is pretty narrow to start with, so we've already had people backing into other people while they're backing out their driveways because of how narrow the road is. But with the construction of these spots, we get them to move off the actual main road to give people better throughway.
Can you state your name for the record?
Melody O'Donnell.
I thought you were going to put some down on the cul-de-sac.
No, the cul-de-sac is too narrow, so that would be a very large project because we have several large pine trees that are there, so we would have to get that removed as well as the fire hydrant that's there.
Four spaces is going to handle your needs?
We think so. We took a vote. We originally had seven spaces, but most of the owners felt like it would look too, like industrialized, and it would ruin the aesthetics of the neighborhood if we have too many spots, so we parted down to four.
How many residents are there in this?
There are 15 units, and most people have at least two cars.
Okay.
So the intent, because I thought your problem was in the cul-de-sac?
Well, originally, people were parking in the cul-de-sac, so we got that problem resolved. We're having people park by the mailboxes. So now the problem is people who live right across from the mailboxes when they're backing out, they don't have enough clearance space to back out.
Okay.
Tabitha, this went before any other committees or groups? No issues?
No, I haven't heard any issues.
Okay.
You're removing just one tree or two trees?
Probably just one. We're going to try not to move any if we can, but it depends on the contractors that come in to look at it to see if we can keep those trees where they are.
I thought would be in terms of if you lose all of that screening, then that would be a big change.
Right.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, what about signage for the spots?
We do have a sign there right now that tell people this is where visitors and residents can park, but we're just hoping to get the spots like drawn in and designated.
And remove the signs?
We'll move the signs like further along so people can see it as they're pulling in.
So it's not going to be assigned parking?
No, no assigned parking.
Yeah, this is just visitor?
Yep.
Parking? Okay.
Visitor and owner?
What's that?
Visitor and owner.
Yeah, so if the owner feels like they have visitors that maybe have some sort of handicap, they can park out in the parking lot and have their visitors park in their own driveways.
And we have a motion?
My, just one last thing. My concern would be the, if any of those trees needed to be removed, like you had said, the screening for the neighboring property. Yeah, so you're not sure if it's going to be removed or not, the trees there?
We will like it not to be removed for cost reasons.
Yeah, and you have a six-foot fence along that whole property line?
Yes.
As well, right?
Yep.
The trees currently didn't go up a decent amount higher than that.
Sure, well, yeah.
Right now, at most, maybe one tree may have to be moved.
Right.
Just the one.
Mm-hmm.
Would move it or remove it?
We would probably try and move it or replace it with something similar further along.
Yeah, I'd like to make that a stipulation that the tree is either replaced or...I'm just, I'm concerned about the...yeah, the view there.
What property is right past the trees?
It's a privately owned house.
Okay.
On the other side of the fence.
Oh, and with the house, yeah.
Did you get any input from them?
No.
No.
This was noticed, though, so neighbors, abutting neighbors?
Oh, it was noticed.
Would have comments, yeah.
Okay. Steve, you want to make the motion with the stipulation?
Boy, you'd like to condition that, Steve?
Yeah, I would.
The T, that the...this would be in the...
Any tree that...
In the one spot where the tree has indicated possible removal, that if it is removed, it's replaced.
Okay.
So we'll make that a condition in the modification to the permit.
All right.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Hey, we have a motion to approve and a second with one modification on Special Permit 351A, including a new modification, a new condition regarding that one tree. This is a modification of a special permit, so it requires a positive vote of everybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next public hearing is for Special Permit 472, which is a special permit site plan review for a new warehouse in excess of 10,000 square feet in industrial zone, which is for South Washington Street. Building for Spears Manufacturing. You'll find all materials in number three of your binder, and I can welcome Condyne to set up at the podium. And I'll just go through the background. You'll see there are three attachments: a letter of transmittal and applications and a site plan, and a peer review report from Horsley-Witten Engineering Group. The property is located at Zero South Washington Street, which is a MAP 25 parcel seven southerly of the Plantation Products Building on approximately 13.8 acres of land. The applicant is seeking a special permit and site plan review to build a 112,500-square-foot industrial warehouse building for Spears Manufacturing, and they will need a special permit and site plan review because they trigger those thresholds. And there are review comments throughout this report that I can go over one at a time, or how you want to handle it, and there's a map on the back.
Yeah, if you could, that'd be good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Do you want them to introduce the project first, and then I can go through it?
Yeah, let's do that.
All right. Get away, gentlemen. This is a... Also in the Dropbox.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
This was in the Dropbox, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Dean Tyre, your board, thanks for having us today. My name is Don O'Neill from Condyne. Here with me is Mark Dibb to my left, and Jeff O'Neill also from Condyne to present the Spears project. We here present the site plan review and also ask for review of the special permit, anything over 10,000 square feet. Our client is Spears Manufacturing Company that manufactures thermoplastic valves and pipe fittings. In the handout, you'll see some of the information that they do. Spears has been in business for over 40 years and is privately owned. They have over a million square feet of manufacturing facilities in four states and nine distribution centers across the United States with worldwide distribution. The site that we're talking about is Zero South Washington Street in Norton. So as we look, here's 495. Here's coming into Mile Standish Industrial Park. And you bear down, instead of going into Commerce, Norton Commerce Center, it's the, one of the lots right on the right as outlined right here. Spears has distribution facilities in Seattle, California, Utah, Colorado, Texas, Florida, Georgia, and Pennsylvania. This proposed facility will be one of their new distribution centers, and it will be no manufacturing done here, just to handle the northeast distribution requirements. The building is situated on 13.8 acres. Right here is South Washington Street where the trucks and cars would pull in. This is 495 on the back end, the loading docks face 495. The building is 250 feet wide from here to here, and it is 400 feet, 450 feet long. In, inside, there will be 15,000 square feet of office, and one of the surprising things, there are only eight employees in this facility. Along with the eight employees, there is no more than eight to 10 trucks a day. Very, very limited traffic on what they do.
What size trucks?
Standard 48 tractor-trailer trucks. And then from there, maybe some smaller trucks for distribution pickup. There's a total number of spaces for parking that is required by the Norton zoning, which is 38 spaces for this type use. 15 is to be built day one. 23 are shown for future as needed. So these ones that are dotted in are all future. This is where the office would be and the employees parking right out front.
I'm sorry, where are the 15 initially going to be?
Right here.
That area, okay.
Right out front. And this will be the front door with offices inside.
Thank you. Good capacity for future parking?
Future parking's all dotted in here and dotted in here. Which helps out on the impervious, not building when it's not needed.
Quick question.
Yes.
So South Washington Street is to the right, or?
South Washington Street's right here.
So the front of the building's actually reversed then?
That's correct.
Okay.
So we have some restrictions, and Mark, our civil engineer, has designed around some of those restrictions. So it's not a highly active facility. In truck traffic, it's less than one truck per hour on an eight-hour shift. The building will be constructed out of tilt-up concrete, be 36 feet in height and 30 feet clear inside. It has nine loading docks across the front, a concrete dolly pad for the trucks against the building, which is 60 feet wide. And it will have a ramp coming in, equipment, and a small outdoor storage yard for pipe materials. The exterior will be painted white with a blue stripe as shown on their PA facility. So what we did, we brought one of their prototype facilities that is in PA, and this is again one of the nine that they have. Currently, they're in Mansfield, just leasing a temporary facility, but the exterior, they have an image that they want to portray, which is the white sprayed off-white with a blue stripe. Around the building, we have outlined fire access to be later discussed with the fire department, which is Lu...we've been in touch with them already, and they've placed some fire hydrants and directed Mark to place some of those fire hydrants. The facility will have ESFR sprinkler heads, which is the latest and greatest in technology, and it will have a fire pump supporting that. Right now, we are doing flow tests, gearing up to do flow tests off South Washington Street. The site has been designed to handle the latest stormwater management water regulations, including infiltration basins, bio retention rate, and rain gardens. You see some of the rain gardens, the infiltration basins on either end. The roof will be, the high point of the roof will be right down the middle and will drain to the left and right of the facility to handle the water. Site lighting, we have 20-foot poles supported with wall packs around the building. As far as the interior, it will have two or three offices, break room, bathroom. Warehouse will be single deep racks. One of the drawings, just to give you a little bit of understanding what the inside will be. This is the loading dock on the first. These are single deep racks for their inventory. It has a remote bathroom, as code for travel distance for the employees. The concrete floor will be seven inches, seven inches thick to handle the rack loading. And the heating system will be Cambridge heating-type units with fresh makeup air on the roof. It's a pretty straightforward building. There's not a lot of thrills to it, but it is a well-established client and has proven it through the documents that you'll read. And one last thing, the timing is critical for them, as May 18th is the target date to get the facility up and running. Not the easiest time to build in the winter months, but we've done it, and they're outgrowing their temporary facility and looking forward to building this in Norton. So if we have any questions, we can answer.
Is the timing of the, hopefully, the facility up and running due to a lease expiration or is it just due to capacity?
It is lease expiration-driven. They are in a holdover period already on the back end of this. So that's, and plus, they're out of room. They're in a multi-tenanted building with tenants on either side in Mansfield, and they're kind of stuck.
Do you know what the projected hours of operation would be?
I don't. Do you have the hours? The hours of operation with eight trucks and eight employees is very minimal.
Yeah.
Not to limit ourselves and put a restriction on it of 24 hours. There's no, there's no neighbors in the vicinity. There's an industrial building built already to the building's left.
Right.
And then there's a vacant lot to the right, and then the hotel beyond.
So on the bottom, that's plantation?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Plantation's right here. See a little bit of outcropping of their building presently.
And where are the light poles going to, the 20-foot light poles going to be?
Usually, we put the light poles around and coming into the driveway, and then the wall packs on the building shining down on the trucks to help assist.
You will be indicating those on the plan?
Yes, we will. Are they on the plan now, Mark?
The lighting? Yes. There'll be no fueling or anything. This will just be strictly deliveries, pickups?
That's correct.
Distribution, right? Okay.
So this, this land, I believe, at one time, I don't know, it was 2005, was slated for 165,000-square-foot building, and it was permitted, and we're coming in for 112,500 with the one lot. And there's another lot buildable here next to it, which will be a buffer between the hotel and us.
Tabitha, any environmental issues that we know of at this point or concerns?
So this is being submitted to Conservation Commission for wetland permit. There are comments included in the report from the conservation agent that it looks like you need to verify the wetland boundary. Did you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, we currently have an ANRAD submitted to conservation. The ANRAD is what defines the, nails down the wetland boundaries. We also have an NOI, notice of intent, for this proposal submitted as well. We received an initial round of comments on the ANRAD. Just to outline a few of the areas, we have a bordering vegetated wetland here. We have an isolated vegetated wetland. We have another wetland in the back, as well as wetland over here, and there's even another piece up, up here. We believe the ANRAD will be definitely an ORAD, which is the determination of the ANRAD. We were hopeful to get on the 28th and as well as begin the discussion. And all that does is define, take the building away, take anything and propose, it just nails down the wetlands, as well as begin the discussions for the proposal itself. We have a consultant review from their consultant already in hand, some comments that we're responding to, and, you know, we plan to work through those comments and be able to get approval again back in...there was a more intensive proposal that was approved. They even filled in wetlands at the time that was approved, so we feel, you know, we're meeting the requirements and will meet the requirements once we get through the comments, and that's where we are with conservation.
Okay, thank you.
So just to follow up on that, there will be submission of the erosion and sediment control narrative, stormwater management plan, operation and maintenance plan, and stormwater calculations as required. As we continue this hearing, we don't have those at this time. Our peer review consultant has requested that the applicant submit those, and that'll have to happen kind of in tandem with the Conservation Commission as they go back and forth. But this does not, the Conservation Commission administers the bylaw for the stormwater article in this case because it's being reviewed by both of our boards. They're the ones who issue that stormwater permit. That's the way that new bylaw works. There are a couple of questions I had as far as parking and driveway.
Okay.
So on the application, it's indicating that you did a calculation for office parking, but I believe it to be a, or where, you said office, but then it said 38 spaces, which would be the warehouse. So what are you designating this building as?
I think the 38 reflected the 100, this 112,500 square feet of warehouse spacing.
So that would be per 3,000 square feet?
Yep.
You get one space?
Yep.
Okay, because for office areas, it's one space per 200 square feet, which would make 562 spaces.
Correct, yes. It's the warehouse.
Okay, so just to be...
And I, and it was only 1,500 square feet of office space. It wasn't 15,000. Literally just, you know.
For industrial warehouse, then the driveway is supposed to be for two-way, 50 feet. Could you say how wide that driveway is currently?
This, the width of this driveway shown is 30 feet. I think that's the, isn't that the opening? I don't believe the entire length of that. This, this apron definitely exceeds 50 feet, so we just want to confirm that.
Bylaw just says two-way, 50 feet. And I did speak to the fire department, and they wanted to make sure the driveway was sufficient width. So we'll need to verify that. Also curious about tractor-trailer trucks, if you're planning on doing some kind of turning radii circulation diagram for us?
Yeah, I can provide that as well. This is a pretty easy radius here. I can leave it on my layout plan, it'll show that, but I believe that's about a 75-foot radius. But I can provide turning template plans. And, you know, as far as the actual maneuvering, they'll just come in, they'll be on their correct side, you know, of the building, they'll be able to look back out their window to back in, and then they pull right back out.
And all traffic has to be directed through the industrial park?
Yep, we're amenable to that. In fact, and it's also designed, there's a very sharp turn on this side. It's purpose to, you know, we can provide signage or a traffic management plan to the client.
So that'll be a condition?
Yep.
Yeah.
Are you planning to put any signs at the entrance?
You know what, there should be, yeah, there should be one pile-on sign that, as far as add, with the Spears logo on it, we can provide whatever traffic directional signs as well. We can add that.
Will it be visible from 495? Will there be any signage on the building from that side?
The building may be visible from 495. We're just, there's going to be quite a bit of buffer here.
Yeah.
This will all be untouched. I don't know if we're planning.
Right now, we're not planning. It's borderline that it'll be visible.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe in the winter, but there's a lot of pine trees right in there also.
We have a hard enough time keeping the billboard visible. That's literally sitting right on the edge.
That is true.
So that becomes no issue? The lights become no issue with the highway department?
It, it shouldn't, I don't, especially at 20...
20 feet, yeah. I wouldn't expect it to. Tabitha, any other issues that you noted?
One last issue from me that was noted in the peer review is earth, earth materials. If you're planning on moving more than the incidental, if there's some kind of narrative you want to...
It's primarily going to be an import. We're not going, nothing's really going to go off the site. It's due to groundwater and making the basins work. Mostly going to be some fill in the building area, so it'll be an import of, of material, but I can create a narrative of that.
So you're not going to be removing more than 500 cubic yards?
I don't believe so. There isn't even, it's been, in the past, it was either mined or stripped. There isn't even topsoil on a majority of the site. If you see a picture out there, it's, you can almost even see the aerial. Even after 15 years of, 12 years of growth, you can see some pretty significant, it's, it's all sand. You know, there isn't even topsoil on a good majority of the property. It was disturbed at some time, some point in the past.
Who are the neighbors to the left?
To the, this one, that's the plantation products building.
That is plantation, okay.
And then there's a small, this is the stone and, stone and granite building that's the smaller.
Do you have a request to be continued to a certain date?
The next available.
Next available.
So, and do you think the peer review will be completed?
Well, the peer reviewers asked for some things you'd have to provide. I know you're going through cons comm still, though, so you're going before them on the 28th?
28th, yeah.
Our next meeting's 12.
Our next meeting is pretty much all town meeting articles, the meeting after that is pretty much all complete streets, safe route to school, so we'd be probably looking at the first meeting in October. By then, you'd probably be.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to get this through, and can we, I mean, you're, the meeting, you're talking about the warrants and stuff, we can't have a placeholder at least to.
That's the 12th, I'm fine with that, if you think.
Yeah.
Okay, the 12th.
We already have a peer review for conservation, so we're hoping to make some ground on Monday night, and I believe they might meet the 11th, that's what I calculated them, so.
Okay, so that would be good.
So do we have enough?
It would probably be 7:35. And that's at the library.
So are we going to have to do an allowance for the parking?
You will have to ask for a waiver for the parking.
Okay.
The driveway's not an issue, that'll go to 50 feet.
Or you'd have to ask for a waiver for that.
I believe I'll need a waiver, this is a 40 scale plan set, so I believe I'll need a 20.
I saw that as well, yeah.
You would have had them in broken up at the four different pages or something.
Can you put a visual scale on the plan?
Any other concerns?
No.
All good.
Can we have a motion to continue special permit 472 to September?
Public comment?
Oh, yeah, close public.
Oh, close the hearing first?
No, we're going to do a continuing.
Oh, you could, yeah, right.
But is there any public comments?
Are there any public comments for this? No?
So we're going to continue the hearing of 472 to September 12 at 7:35?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Autumn Lane, a surety request and street acceptance, that's under number four of your binders. Jay Zola is here to speak on behalf of Larson Farms Autumn Lane. As you'll see, the applicant is requesting a release of $14,921.65 to cover the completion of all remaining items plus interest, so we can probably talk about that first, and then they would also like to have the street accepted by the town.
Jay Zola, Folklund Zola Builders, Mansfield, Mass. Tabitha said it, it's that simple, the roadway is complete, we're looking for the release of the funding, and I think, and we're looking for a recommendation to the selectment for Thursday night to put us on the warrant, is that correct?
Well, we'll get to that in just.
Okay, but that's my purpose being here to ask the board for those two things. Keith inspected the work, as far as I know, Tabitha should have received something in writing for his conversation, and it's complete.
So you see these attachments, the surety accounting spreadsheet, the as-built plan of Autumn Lane, pages from their special permit outlining what they need to do for street acceptance, draft warrant language, and correspondence with Keith Silver where he signed off on the surety release.
So that's a Cape Cod berm that you put in?
Mm-hmm. Well, I understand.
It looks very nice, but it, it doesn't look like it's very high, I wondered, especially around the center island, if it's, if it's got all that rock in and.
Yeah, we, we did, though, because we, it was way low, we built it all up, and then we had to put stone in, more stone in around the, the exterior of the island, Keith wants a little more stone, but I believe, you know, we did what it's supposed to be, you know. I think it's right, because Keith was happy, with the paving, anyway.
Keith was good with the island?
He was good with it.
Well, the island was his baby, he was, he was, he knew what he wanted with the island the whole time.
Any of the residents in attendance? No.
Pretty sure they want the street accepted. I'm pretty sure they want the street accepted.
The street acceptance will need a hearing, so that will be noticed to the residents of Autumn Lane, if the board chooses to refer to a hearing, put it on the warrant.
Okay, the highway superintendent signed off on it. Jay has requested a release of the 14,921.65. Any other comments? Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second, seconded by Frank. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, so they got the money back. Second part being that additionally, the applicant is requesting the town accept the street per the procedure outlined in attachment C and Mass. General Law 32, Section 1732. So as a result of this request, a placeholder has been put on the town warrant, which is shown in attachment D, it's draft language, and this request has been added to the board of selecting agenda for this Thursday, where a vote will be taken to refer it back to the planning board for a public hearing, so we're kind of in a funny deadline period right now. So it's recommended that the planning board set a time and date for this hearing, we can have it at the next hearing as, as, as part of the next meeting, in order to issue the report to town meeting, so that it is approved.
Very good.
So we have to, you have to notice this for the next.
We'll have to notice it to the residents of Autumn Lane, and it'll be publicly noticed in Town Hall.
It does look nice.
Is this a motion, or is this just a?
I think we should make a motion to set a hearing.
For September 12?
So it'll be at our next meeting?
At 7:30?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to set a hearing for this, in notification to the residents. Second, motion by Timmy, seconded by Stephen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll, we'll have a hearing on this language on September 12, at the library.
Very good, thank you.
Jay, thank you.
That's becoming a very busy day.
Always gets busier on town meeting, you know? Last item, Clap Street Solar Butter Landscaping, the Hayden's property, and that is for the request of release of the surety and the amount of $20,000, well, in the about estimated, they have $20,000 held in surety, so there is a proposal, it was sent to three contractors per procedural requirements, and this is what we got back, and there is a plan attached as well, it shows buffering trees and shrubs, and there's some selective tree pruning and removal. So if the homeowner wants to say anything, we have questions.
So we reached out to Landmark Landscaping, and I think that he may have been the only one to submit a bid, because I haven't seen any others.
It was sent to three contractors.
Right, right, I'm just saying, we just knew of one. I was very happy, came to the house, came to the property more than once, I think he has a very good feel for what needs to be done, and I think if you guys have any questions, you could, he's here, you could direct it to him, because he understands planting better than I do. In addition to that, I want to request a meeting to address the other landscaping, because I've reached out to Wheaton twice, the last meeting, they said they were going to do stuff on the other side of the fence, or no one knew who was doing it, I've reached out to them twice, and they still have not responded to me, or really finished all the things that need to be finished.
And are you referring to?
I'm referring to the landscaping that already exists that's supposed to be maintained.
The maintenance.
Yes, that it's not being maintained, and there are still some dead trees out there, and no one's there, so, other than the herd of deer, they're there.
Yeah, I, you know, maybe Marcus can come up and talk to this thing, because I have no idea why you'd be removing trees.
He can explain that, because I didn't realize that that might be necessary as well.
Hello?
Marcus LaMarcus Landscaping.
So you want to know?
So, one of the things I noticed, you know, in the description here, is that you're going to remove eight trees.
Yep.
And is it the trees that are tagged right now?
Yep, some of, some are pruned, some of, there's written, writing on the ribbon.
Okay, because they look like nice old girl trees, some nice height to them, and why can't you just, instead of removing those trees, put stuff underneath them?
So most successful evergreen plantings require a lot of sunlight, there's a few that'll survive in the, in the shade, but a lot of those are very much deer, or non-deer, deer tolerant, so they'll get all the way, you know, eaten. Some of the trees that we selectively are going to remove are ones that are not offering the customer any type of barrier or buffer to the solar field, they're more of an, above that growth, there's, you know, all of them are all deciduous plants, none of them evergreen plants, in the wintertime, all of them will lose, lose their leaves. There's some of the bigger, there's a, there's a large maple we're going to try to save, there's a, there is one large evergreen, or two large evergreen, pine, white pine, both of which have lost all their understory tree branches, and their first branches somewhere between 40 and maybe 60 feet off the ground, so from their sightline, it's really not doing anything to block the solar field at all. So by pruning and removing some of the trees I've selected, it's going to let more sunlight into the area, allowing for, on that plan I showed, hemlock and spruce, both which thrive really well in full sun conditions versus shade conditions. Hemlock will survive in the shade, but it'll be a lot thinner, not a dense growth, and it won't really give them the barrier they're looking for. Cedar, arborvitae, couple of varieties of arborvitae, actually, but those typically are very much, I call it deer bait, but they will eat them, and they'll never get a chance to get to a point where they can survive. Hemlock is susceptible to deer damage, but where their sightline is from their property to, it's like a valley that comes back up, so if we plant these, it's kind of like a natural berm there, the hemlock could withstand like a four-foot cut, even if the deer ate them, and still thrive above that level to give them the, the look that they're.
So these, all of these plantings are at the top of the rise?
So there's a, like, their backyard, they have an existing retaining wall about 20 feet plus or minus off the back of their garage foundation, the land drops, carries grade, and it's slowly tapering off as it's carrying, and then it kind of comes back up, which is where a lot of those trees that I'd like to prune and remove are, in order to plant on top of that bank with evergreens, to give them the screen that they're looking for, to, you know, protect them in the winter. And all these, all the trees that are there are all, you know, if you've visited the site, but they're all 30 to 50 feet up before the first branch, so they're not really getting any cover out of that. This, it's thick through that woods, so it blocks in the summertime, but as soon as those leaves drop, it's, it's bare. And there's also bitter, like, it's off their property, but I'm not sure who the butter is there, but it's hard to walk through the woods, because it's so thick, but there's bittersweet, there's all sorts of invasives, thorn, you know, thorns and, and all that, that, you know, even those all lose their leaves in the wintertime, so it's just going to really, they're not going to achieve any type of barrier with that type of planting. And there's some, some of the trees we are going to save, to be honest, it's trying to keep that growth.
Okay, so there was a modification to the proposal?
Yep.
That reduced the number of trees you were going to remove, and maybe changed the height?
So I changed a couple of the initial removals, I kind of felt like I could maybe take a couple of the smaller ones, right and left of those larger trees, and still get the sunlight in, and then pruning, I know it sounds crazy to prune the tree up further, but I'm, I'm really trying to get the sunlight in there. If they don't get sunlight in there, like, the trees coming in at 12, 14 feet tall, so those, you know, that's a good-sized tree, but five years from now, they're going to be, they'll thin, like, they just will naturally thin, because they're not achieving enough sunlight to, to stay dense. So that's part of the, you know, obviously, the budget is.
Okay.
Does the modification also require, I guess, some collaboration with the homeowners?
Meaning with what?
In terms of the site, is that what I said?
I, I just, I'm, I'm trying to give them the most amount of cover for the least amount of, I guess is the best way, the least amount of money, so it's, I'm trying to maximize, like, we can make this thing look beautiful with all sorts of flowers and shrubs, but like, that isn't going to give them any more privacy than, like, I'm trying to give them the biggest evergreen plant, and then, moving forward, they can, you know, layer there towards their yard to beautify their side of the property, but it's really just trying to get the sunlight in to let these plants thrive, to achieve the goal of the screen.
If you're referring to cleanup, there was a discussion.
Yeah, no, there's no.
Verified, the cleanup is going to be done by the homeowner.
Yep, there's a chicken coop and a couple of the, some, you know, some structural debris and stuff like that, but they, we had discussed it, and she said they would handle all that prior to us starting.
So you mentioned hemlock, spruce, cedar, arborvitae?
Yep.
And eventually, all these do naturally thin?
Not in shade, I mean, not in full sun, in shade they will.
Okay.
So without sunlight, a plant isn't going to thrive, like, most plants don't even flower in enough shade, like, they'll stay, they'll grow, trying to reach the sun. That's why you see white pine, like, if you look in any native, native forest, white pine, you see them sky pencil high, and they're like six branches at the top. It's because a white pine is a full sun lover, so as that plant grows, the understory isn't getting the sunlight, all the branches die off, you see people limb them all the way up, and they're, they're kind of chasing the top of the tree. That's how evergreens typically operate, most evergreens don't, this holly, American holly will do okay in the shade, but they're not a dense, you're not going to get the screen that you're looking for to protect them. Yep.
So in months of like January, February, March?
Yeah.
You'll be able to see through the trees?
These are evergreen?
Right now?
Right now, yes.
In the existing condition, absolutely. I, I, I think, because I came into this halfway through the summer, so right now, everything's leafed out, but.
Plus, these are the trees that deers eat, pretty much everything, six, seven feet.
Correct. Arborvitae is, there's one variety of arborvitae that are somewhat deer resistant, it's called placata arborvitae, but the, most spruces, the, the needle of a spruce tree, the deer don't typically like, you know, the sensation in the mouth.
To be clear, we're not planting arborvitae.
No, no, no.
Talking about planting spruces.
Yeah, there's a list, there's a list of selected trees to do, but yeah, we're not doing.
Okay.
Yep.
But come the months I had mentioned, if you do plant these new trees, it's going to be full year-round?
That's the goal, that's the reason I'm trying to get the sun in.
Okay.
Yep, if we don't cut these trees, and we have to cut the pruning and the removals out of the budget, you know, it'll look beautiful when I put them in, or someone else puts them in, go back three years from now, they'll probably be a little thinner, they won't be thriving, and then five years, they'll be a little even thinner, and so within 10 years, the customer is not going to be, you know, they're going to be. so within ten years, the customer is not going to be, you know, they're going to be almost seeing through them again.
But with the removal of these eight trees that you're recommending, and the new trees you're putting in, I kind of want to hear the word guaranteed, but you're saying that with the access of light, these trees will survive and be bloomed year-round for proper?
The goal is, the problem is, the property line is, the customer's property line is roughly twenty, there's like an old farm fence there. So on the other side of that property line, if no one ever trims those trees and they just keep growing up, at some point, they could, you know, potentially shade our new plants. Hopefully, we can, you know, I don't know who would maintain that, but someone could maintain that. I'm not sure, who's the butter?
Wheaton.
Wheaton.
It is Wheaton. So I don't know how that works. On the other side of that, where, what they did was they plant, like, that's on the northwest, northeast side of that where the solar farm is, they've planted a lot of the same, they have hemlock, they have spruce fir, white pine, I think they have some arborvitae over there too, right?
We're aware of what that, that's the landscape.
Yeah, so that side of it, but there's bittersweet, that's, you know, naturally just coming out of the woods, just climbing that because it's, bittersweet loves sun, so bittersweet's going to go at the sun and grow. So if that doesn't get maintained, eventually that'll choke out that whole, you know, screen for the rest of the street.
That's the screening along the fence?
That's there now, yeah.
And everything that you're recommending plant is not deer food?
No.
Okay, so.
Right.
There's, there's very select trees that are not, I guess is the best way, deer will eat anything if they're hungry enough. Obviously, deciduous trees lose their leaves, so they're not going to eat wood, but they, any type of evergreen, you know, if they're hungry enough, they're going to go after, if they can get it. Spruce is like the most not eaten by a deer. Hemlock, I would say, is probably the next. Placata arborvitae would be the next. Well, white pine would be in there too, actually, I don't like white pine, but. My thought on white pine was it's, it's not really, it's, it grows so fast, it'd be hard for them to try to keep the growth down, and they like to lose the lower leaves, so eventually they'd be, I mean, needles, they'd be chasing.
What's your deadline for this? Once you're ready to go, how long will it take you, and when do you absolutely need to have these trees in by?
I'd like to have them in by before the end of, end of September, hopefully by middle September. I have, the problem is, is the scale or size of these trees, most of them are still in the ground. So it'd be about a two-week lead from me ordering, them digging, and shipped to site. So there's a little bit, they come out of down south New Jersey that way, coming up.
Would you clarify just the warranty? As per stated on Plan 90 Day, what is that?
It's a ninety-day warranty on the.
So ninety-day warranty on the plans?
All my trees will be planted in a fifty-fifty compost little mix. We use a, it's called a gator bag, it's like a watering bag. On an evergreen, it looks like a donut really on the flat, and it's, you know, forty inches across. It's got a little fill valve on it, you put a hose in, you fill the thing up, and it just naturally drips, so you'd water that. You see them sometimes on some of the commercial plantings now, the green, you see them coming up the, they're about, you know, they stand about three feet off the ground. It's just the water, so you're not just filling up a little saucer with water, it gives the plant a, you know, twenty-five or thirty gallons of water. Typically, you fill them every two to three days.
And that'll extend, how long will that, do you do that for? What period?
Freeze. Yeah.
Yeah.
The bags?
Yeah.
So, I just provide the bag, it's going to be up to the owner.
Okay, it'll be up to the.
Hopefully, I gotta negotiate that, though. If they get the trees, I think they'll fill my.
Yeah, we talked a lot about what some of the maintenance that we would do, willing to wrap the hemlocks if they get eaten in the winter.
Yep.
So we've kind of talked about things that we can maintain ourselves. So we know that we're going to have to put some effort into it, to maintain it.
All right, and just if I can ask you both, in terms of the plan, the design, you guys are comfortable with this?
I was comfortable with it. Another thing I liked about the plan is he's going to wrap the trees around the back of our yard, which will actually screen for Mr. and Mrs. Wicker, because they can see the solar farm in the fall through the picture window through our backyard.
Okay.
And that wasn't anything that they, anyone thought was going to happen, but they can see right from their front window, right through our backyard. So I think the way Marcus had designed it to kind of wrap around, it'll provide, clean and pass some screen as well.
So that's why you went around the corner.
Yep. It's a very, I mean, that's a very basic plan. Obviously, it's, you're not getting into the beauty of landscaping in that, it's, we're going after a necessity or a need of trying to screen. I mean, if they want it to look nice, obviously coming back, but I want to maximize as much as we can and the biggest plant I can get for the budget allowed.
Are you from Norin? I know this is the last.
Yep, yeah, yep. We're right on one forty.
Drive by it regularly.
Yes, yeah.
So Tabitha just understands, so request to release the surety, that would go to whom? If we're releasing the, we're releasing the surety?
Oh, it's held in an agreement with the treasurer, there's a process.
Okay.
So you'd have to make the motion, and then I can start the administrative process of releasing it, because it's in a tripartite agreement.
Yeah, right, it's kind of managed and.
Yeah.
As needed, it's, yeah.
So the money is held until Landmark submits a bill?
I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, that's what you're going for, right?
Yeah.
What?
Well, I mean, just understand when, you know, who's determining when that payment will be released to Landmark and how that would all work out?
So that would, so it would be released into account to the town, and then, I believe, then Landmark submits the bill and we pay them directly?
Yeah, okay, makes sense.
And as their, the work is done?
But I can outline the entire process from our treasurer to you guys.
I was, I think I proposed for two payments, just initial.
Yeah, I think that's a forty percent initial and then sixty upon completion, so.
Yeah, I think that's agreeable, as long as the town continues to hold the money and we react to Landmark's invoices.
Is there any other?
Do we need to put any stipulation on the final walkthrough after it's done, before the funds release, on our end, or is that?
It's probably a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I'm just trying to think how we. I guess completion of the job, if, you know.
Just a notification that the work's done and we take.
Honestly, I'd prefer it so everybody knows, you know, sees our.
Yeah, that way everybody's on the same page, there's no confusion.
The homeowner.
But we would release it, we would release it now, and then upon verification, I guess.
Have you, obviously you knew that I ribbed it, yes, you saw the ribbons on it today. You guys can feel free to walk by, I mean, I think I chose the right trees. If there's any disagreement, I'm open to negotiation on, you know, if you, if you see something that, I tried to pick the trees that I think will make the biggest impact of letting sunlight in.
I mean, we sat down before you put the plan together, so we all talked about it together.
Okay, you're comfortable?
Yeah.
I just, my first response is, why cut down a tree?
Right.
Are there, I don't know if there are any other comments from?
Are there any other comments from the butters?
All right.
Surety release request?
So you want, we need a motion to approve the surety release request with the two conditions that we advance the forty percent on the signing of the order, that the remaining sixty percent be held until the job is completed and inspected to the satisfaction of the homeowners and the board.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah.
We still have some other business, don't we?
Huh?
We still have other business, right?
Yeah. That completes the list of items to do tonight. Now, we can go back to the top of the agenda. And any input from members of the board, anything of concern, you see in the community?
Nothing from me.
Right?
I guess it's just that they've had to mention the reaching out to Wheaton about their landscaping at the solar farm.
The maintenance issue that she just mentioned?
Yeah.
I can call Jeff Morgan and.
Okay.
Mention that it was mentioned.
I know they were looking to negotiate the agreement with the operator to make sure that was included.
I was, I was by there today, and there are some trees browning out, but.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if they completed that work that they were supposed to do. It could be the stuff that got delayed in the springtime, they're going to do in the fall, but they got to tell us.
Yeah, I'll check in with them and forward any response to you guys.
Also for a recommendation, we have Bristol Aggie, Bristol Aggie Agricultural School in Dayton, and they do have a landscaping program. So I don't know, there's an opportunity to do something with the school and the college, whether it's intern, volunteer, or do something, whether it's an annual event. There are a lot of students who want to further this as a career with agriculture as well as arbor, arbor studies. So that could be an opportunity of just having something as a resource down the street.
Thanks, Frank.
Maybe they can give us a list of trees that aren't deer food.
Honestly.
There are plenty of trees lists, but they're all deer food. Like you said, it's.
Eventually, the harm they're going to eat.
But the spruce has like that, that nasty, there's a technical term for it, that they don't want to eat, you know, it's got that, that resiny.
Yeah.
Residue, resiny residue.
Resiny residue.
Anything else?
That's tech.
One of the things we have to do is set some October, November dates.
So we have up to September twenty-sixth.
And we have town meeting?
And town meeting is. Well, thank you, Peter, October twenty-third.
That's a Monday?
Yeah.
So, we pretty much have to have a meeting on the seventeenth, right?
Special election on the seventeenth.
What?
There's a special election on the seventeenth.
Is there?
Special election on the October seventeenth, huh?
Yeah.
So then we can't meet on that day?
Drawn a blank, though, was it, for, oh, state senate, right, I'm sorry.
We would naturally be meeting on the tenth, right? Because that's two weeks from the twenty. Oh, okay.
Twenty-fourth.
Well, we kind of got off cycle, and we kind of shifted to second and fourth from first and third.
Yeah, we're off cycle now.
Just for, I think, scheduling reasons.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, but I was, I was just concerned about, are there any items that, you know, do we have a meeting? Is it necessary to have a meeting before the town meeting on the twenty-third? The available dates are the third and the tenth.
At that point, anything that's on the warrant would be there.
Well, we are meeting on those items on the twelfth, if those are continued. We have the twenty-sixth.
Going to be there, it's already there.
And then the third. We should set a meeting, though, in case anything else comes in too.
So what are you thinking on the, any preference there? We're being on the twenty-sixth?
Well, I was thinking the tenth and the twenty-fourth, but the twenty-fourth is after town meetings, but we should be all ready for then anyway. Is that an issue for anything else, having it the day after?
I don't think so.
Anybody else?
Other than.
Two nights in a row?
Yeah, other than that.
Yeah, other than that, because that's a late night.
It's either the third or the tenth, or the tenth and the twenty-fourth, correct?
Well, we can't have it on the seventeenth, that's the special election.
Yeah, it kind of forces our hands. Is everybody available on those three days?
Could do it on another night of the week, but I know we like to keep Tuesdays.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's, looks fine to me, I have nothing.
Tenth and twenty-fourth?
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll go with that.
Maybe there'll be nothing and we can, you know.
And for November?
Go.
November. Fourteenth and twentieth.
Well, if we're doing the twenty-fourth, we could do the seventh and twenty-first. It's Thanksgiving week.
Then seventh is an election day, is there an election?
There's an election.
Seventh is election day?
A lot of elections out.
So the fourteenth?
Fourteenth and twentieth?
Fourteenth and twentieth?
It is election day, yeah.
Yeah, I'm traveling on the twenty-eighth, but that's okay.
So October tenth, the twenty-fourth, November fourteenth, and the twenty-eighth.
Sounds good.
We'll set it then.
Okay, and the planning directors report?
Okay, so under B, this should be brief. Current applications were on tonight's agenda, so there is no upcoming applications that I've received at this point. Other planning town meeting news is that the proposed zoning changes for the recreational marijuana moratorium and non-conforming residential structures will be heard on September twelfth at the library. And then on September twenty-sixth at the library, we'll be having a complete street safe routes to school kickoff public meeting. So, some recent decisions have also been issued, as I've noticed, to the planning board. Special permit four seventy-three for the keeping of horse in an R forty zone, and special permit site plan review four seventy-three, seventy-four for Three Lopes Drive, the use of hazardous materials, were both posted today with the town clerk. And the modification for Mary Jo Road was decided on the eighth, so those are all in the Dropbox decisions folder. Construction administration items, we talked about Wheaton Solar, just an update on Oak Street multifamily housing. That's like twelve units, I believe, of townhouse-style housing. The landscaping was not put in according to the plan. I did a little site visit, and I asked him to put some trees in and want another site visit before they get occupancy permits there.
Where, where were the trees required on Oak Street?
So, in the back, they had like bumpouts in the parking lot, every so many spaces for trees, they just made it all parking. And then in the front, there was supposed to be cherries and white pines buffering, kind of, if you're looking at the property, there's a, like an easement or something that was, the screening's all gone on the left.
That's where they ran the gas line.
Where they ran the gas line, so they're supposed to plant all of that, and they just put some arborvitae's, which weren't even on the plan. So I said, I don't want the arborvitae's, because of all our recent talks. So he's said he'd do that. Uh, their planning news, we've got all our TVs, but we can't turn them on, next time we'll do that. The ENF, the environmental.
So is there just the one TV, or are there others?
No, there is one in here, one in the break room, and one upstairs in the second-story conference area.
Okay.
And we have two laptops that are planned, shared, they're shared-use laptops, so, yeah, next meeting, we'll definitely have site plans and everything on that screen. The environmental notification form, which is step one of the MEPA state filing for the Leonard Street development, has been issued, and I put that on the Dropbox. I also have a hard copy in the office, if anyone wants to see it, and we'll be issuing staff comments on that.
Is Norton Office Park an official or unofficial name?
That's what they're calling it on the ENF, so that's what I'm starting to call it. And that is an early permitting requirement for those at home that are following. Another thing we met on de-icing materials, staff met to discuss the use of sodium de-icers in wetland protection areas. I guess there was an issue in Red Mill, they were using sodium de-icers, and there was signage up. So, the recommendation that we had, Keith and Keith from Highway, myself, Jennifer Carlino, Mike, we all met, to put a condition which specializes a two-to-one ratio of magnesium and sodium, which I guess the town highway department already promotes the use of, it's just, need to be a little bit more explicit. And then town meeting warrant articles are due tomorrow, so we're on the, we're on the schedule, I think we're all.
And then it says your town meeting October twenty-fourth, it is the twenty-third or the twenty-fourth? Peter?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, Monday, right?
That's a typo, thank you.
Twenty-third, Monday, that's right?
Twenty-third, Monday. And in doubt, go to Peter.
So next up is minutes?
Is that good?
That's it.
Okay, and we have minutes of August eighth?
Oh, yeah.
For approval?
So nice that we're caught up on minutes, or the next meeting, that's good. I had no comments on that, so.
Nope, I had none.
It was all good for me.
Motion to approve the minutes of August eighth?
I will second.
All approved, all agreed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, minutes for August eighth are approved, and bills and warrants, where are those little labels?
Those are under CD. So we have. So we have three thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents from the planning board budget?
If you don't have one, I got two.
Oh, maybe, maybe somebody got yours.
I was just like, I think somebody...
And then there are, we're separating out the revolving accounts, that's what the town accountants call it, revolving accounts, because we have a separate account for the tech grant money that was awarded to us, and then separate accounts for the peer review, so those are split out on this spreadsheet a little bit more clearly than last night.
Okay, so, we're approving three thousand four eighty-six eighty-nine?
It's actually total of thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy-six, I know it's small. Thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy-six and forty-five cents.
So moved.
We actually approve the tech grant?
It all falls under planning, the department, which is the planning board signs off for, so...
I think we should be doing these separately?
Well, we can, I think you all wanted to do it together.
No, I like, I'm just, I'm saying, motioning the full amount.
What allows to get paid, it's just where it comes from.
Yeah, it's just different accounts, so...
It's all gonna have to be paid.
And I'll have to ask you for signatures on separate forms.
Okay, so are there any questions regarding the items on this budget request? And we have a motion to approve the thirteen thousand three seventy-six forty-five?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agreed. Anything else to come before the board? Okay, so we're gonna adjourn at eight twenty-seven, thank you very much, gentlemen.